I will now call the March 16, 2015 City Council Meeting to order. If you would stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and then I will lead you in the pledge of allegiance. And I know I didn't give you the one-minute warning, but I wasn't paying attention.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united on indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
May I see it? Welcome, all of you in attendance, as well as those that might listen to the audio at a later time, to tonight's City Council meeting. Next, we have the consent agenda. Are there items that need to be pulled? If not, I accept the motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A roll call, please.
Councilman Pavel.
Aye.
Councilman Levesey.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have introduction reading of Bill 4363.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4363, an ordinance amending subsection 235.020.b.4 and .06 of Chapter 235 fireworks of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri relating to the application process for fireworks licenses.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Full same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4363, an ordinance amending subsection 235.020.b.4 and .6 of Chapter 235 fireworks of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri relating to the application process for fireworks licenses.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Levesey.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Pavel.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4536.
Next, we have a presentation by Ron Van with ETCs on the Citizen and Development Survey. Welcome, Ron.
Good evening. My name is Ron Van. Can everybody hear now? Okay. Good evening. My name is Ron Van. I'm Senior Vice President with ETC Institute. I'm pleased to be with you today to present to you the survey findings. Let's see. Okay. Just as far as the agenda, we just want to talk briefly about the purpose and methodology used. Bottom line up front, major findings we heard, conclusions, and any questions that you might have. Related purposes is fourfold. One, to assess resident satisfaction, to measure trends from previous surveys, to set priorities, and to compare your performance with other communities across the country in the Kansas City metro area. The survey was approximately seven pages in length. It took about 20 minutes to administer. As many of the questions were similar to the questions that you've asked in the past. The survey was administered by mail with phone follow-up about seven to 10 days after the mailing. Our goal was to complete 600 surveys. We completed a little bit over that. The confidence level is 95 percent, and margin of error plus or minus 4 percent. And you can see the location here of the respondents to the survey, and also in the booklets that you have, there's quite a bit of mapping and things of that nature for the satisfaction levels. So the bottom line up front, really, four different areas. Number one, residents have a very positive perception of the city. We measure that a lot when looking at 79 percent are satisfied with the overall quality of life, only 5 percent are dissatisfied. So we like to look at that relationship. And anything that's over three to four to one is a very good relationship. Yours is far beyond that. 69 percent are satisfied with the overall quality of city services, only 7 percent are dissatisfied. Then you look at trends, and overall satisfaction has improved significantly in the long term. Have some short-term drops, but that's normal. It's like anything else from a trending, but when you look from 2006 to now, it's pretty significant upwards trends in satisfaction. Satisfaction with Blue Springs services rated above the Kansas City metro area, many areas that were rated. We've got about 30 communities in the metro area that we do work for. The city rated above the Kansas City metro area in 24 of the 38 areas that were compared, and you rated significantly above the areas in about 40 percent of the 38 areas that were compared. And then last, overall priorities for improvement over the next two years. Maintenance of city streets, buildings, and facilities, flow of traffic and congestion management, or maintenance, excuse me. Those are the same two that you had last time also. So it's very, very consistent in your priorities. So major finding, number one, residents generally have a positive perception of the city. And so if you look at this, and so I'd ask you always to think that the blue on the left is always very satisfied, the red is a combination of dissatisfied and very dissatisfied. So if you really want to compare red, you need to compare the dark blue and the lighter blue that's kind of checked. So you could see overwhelmingly, overall quality of life, overall quality of services, overall image of the city, value received from city tax dollars, how well the city is managing growth. Overwhelmingly, those are much more satisfied than any degree of dissatisfied. And then how well the city is planning for future growth. Again, the satisfaction is much higher than the dissatisfaction. A lot of people are neutral on that subject. But I want you to remember these six issues when we come back to it a little bit later when we look at trending, because I think it's fairly significant. Overall satisfaction by city services, we really measure the main 13 city services you have. Fire service, police service, parks and recreation, water store, communication with the public, building property maintenance, et cetera. In 11 out of the 13 areas, the level of dissatisfaction was 17 percent or less. So you could look at that from a standpoint that we look at 20 percent as really being a benchmark. If you fall below 20 percent, that's a good ratio of satisfaction to dissatisfaction. So in 11 of the 13 areas, you have that benchmark. The two that you don't is the maintenance of city streets and sidewalks and the flow of traffic. And again, that's fairly consistent with what you've seen before, but in one of those areas in particular, you have very good news in the trending over the last eight years. And look at level of agreement with various statements regarding the city. First, I think the most important one being commercial areas in the city are better than five years ago. You have overwhelmingly people strongly agreeing or agreeing with that statement. It's about 80 percent of people. Only 9 percent of people disagreeing with that. So where do you go from there? That's where you've been in the last five years. Well, the vast, vast majority of people think that you should proactively encourage existing new business development along major corridors, and at the same time, the biggest kickback is on giving tax incentive or other economic tools. So they like where you've gone the last five years, or in favor of your encouraging that. It's just tax incentives, and it's not the way that they would like you to go towards that. Satisfaction with business community, very satisfied with the quality of shopping opportunities in the city, very satisfied with the overall atmosphere of business in the city. As a place to grow, it's a little bit more of a mixed bag, but obviously, you've got over 50 percent saying that they're very satisfied and satisfied. And then you have the highest, 32 percent, saying they're neutral, and that's because most people probably don't work in the city as opposed to shopping and opposed to opportunities, atmosphere for business. So first part of it, very, very good for you. Major finding, number two. Overall satisfaction with city services is generally the same throughout the city. And you have a number of slides on this. I think you have probably close to 100 maps that talk about satisfaction levels. And basically, how the maps work is they're color-coded. And blue, which is the dark blue, which is where you see mostly, is satisfied. So you look at all areas of the city, and you can see pretty basically that when you're looking at overall quality of city services, your residents feel the same about you, whether you're north, south, east, and west. And that's really what you want to see, because sometimes I'm sure you get from the various districts, talk of that some other district is getting a higher quality service in this or this or this, you know, various things. But overall, there's a lot of consistency in regards to the overall quality of service. And then you could drill that down at the micro level in regards to certain of the services within the booklet. And we're just not showing it because we have a lot of materials to get through. Major finding, third, analysis of trends. I mean, we've been doing this project for a long, long time with you. So the key with it is that we have on here trending charts starting from 2006. So at the top, yellow is 2006. Red is 2013. Blue is 2014. The arrows that go up are saying that the trend over that period of time has been at least a minimum of 5,000, oh, excuse me, 5 percent increase in overall satisfaction over that period of time. If the arrow's going down, that means that there has been a minimum of a 5 percent shift downward in satisfaction. So you could see that in eight areas, you're shifting upwards. So satisfaction has gone up at least 5 percent, in some cases significantly more than 5 percent. As an example, you look at flow of traffic and congestion management, still an issue in the community, still a very, very high priority, but your satisfaction level has gone up from 32 percent to 48 percent. That's very, very significant. I mean, that's almost a 50 percent satisfaction level increase in an eight-year period of Trends influencing residents' perceptions when you get into overall quality of life. Remember earlier, I talked to you about that you look at those six slides, and you have to look at that within a concept of where you've been over the last eight years? You see, in every one of the indicators of residents' perceptions of the quality of life in the City of Blue Springs, you have gone up significantly in the last eight years. Overall quality of life, overall quality of services, overall image of the city, value received for city tax dollars, how well the city is managing growth, how well the city is planning for future growth. And you could see also from this that certain things people just normally rate higher. So for example, in your community, overall quality of life, you're at 79 percent. Now, how well the city is planning for future growth, you're at 42 percent. So if you were just looking at those in isolation, you might say satisfaction with how you're planning growth is really, really low compared to the quality of life. But if you look at it from a standpoint of where you were in 2006 at 28 percent, and where you are in 2014 at 42 percent, or where you were managing growth in 2006 at 30 percent, and where you are today at 50 percent, those are, again, pretty significant increases. Satisfaction with various aspects of public safety. When you look at it, again, you see in all of the areas, four of them have gone up significantly. How quick police respond to emergencies has gone up very, very high in that period of time. So that's a really good trend for you. Satisfaction with various aspects of city communication, the user-friendliness of the city's website has gone up significantly. All the other aspects of communications have stayed the same or have not gone up as significantly. You look at city maintenance, which, you know, has been, is an issue and something that you continue to work on, though, and out of 12 areas, you've gone up significantly in seven of them. Maintenance of city traffic signals, cleanliness of city streets, maintenance of city buildings, maintenance of city's water and wastewater system, maintenance stormwater drainage, maintenance major streets, and maintenance or preservation of downtown. And if you look downtown, that's one of the most significant increases in satisfaction on anything, possibly anything in the entire survey, up from 35 percent in 2006 to 58 percent in 2014. That's as major of a jump as I've seen in the surveys that I've been doing in a few years. So, I mean, that's a very, very, very significant number, and that's not over a 20-year period of time. We're talking about over an eight-year period of time. So as it comes to parks and recreation, you see that you're up in four of the areas, you're down in one of the areas. And we're going to be talking a little, because you're down a little in parks and recreation, but I could tell you, one aspect is while certain things are important, and this is an area I do a lot of work in, where certain things are important, really, when you get to the top of the heap, maintenance of local parks is the number-one thing people look at as far as being important. And so you could be up in four or five different areas, but if you're down in the maintenance levels of city parks, it's going to lower your overall satisfaction. It just will, because it's that important to people. Right after that is walking trails, but it's not nearly as important from a maintenance standpoint as parks. Yes, Ron?
Yeah. While you're on that point, we have been marketing to our city that we are in need of maintenance funds. So it's not, I guess it shouldn't be a big surprise that we spend a lot of money to tell people that we're down on maintenance funds.
Yeah. Well, one of the keys from here is that how satisfied are people and how important is it? So you could say if you're down on maintenance, but how important is it to people? But it is extremely important.
Right.
When it comes just to the maintenance of parks, that's the number-one thing people look to. More important, because people look and they say, "We've made millions of dollars of investments in parks. Let's make sure that they stay good." So that's why you're seeing it. It impacts the entire park system, just the maintenance of it. And then in regards to your city staff, well, the big increases, oh, excuse me, in code enforcement, overall appearance of the city enforcement, assigned regulations. Here, you've gone up in literally, well, in every single area, and significantly, you've gone up in these areas. And I would think that there's probably some relationship between how much you've gone up in this area and how much you've gone up in the downtown area. Because when you get into, involved with certain of those things, and people really look at city codes and ordinances, a lot of times, they'll go to downtown buildings, older buildings, buildings of that nature that have really been fixed up, and they like those efforts. Satisfaction with various aspects of customer service by staff. Throughout the survey, you get high ratings, your staff get high ratings for courteousness and politeness. They get high ratings for easy to contact, and they are prompt, accurate, and complete in their answers. So you can see in every single area, you've gone up, but in those three areas in particular, you've gone up significantly. So from there, if I'm sitting on city staff, if I'm the city manager, if I'm sitting on the city council, you know, obviously, I'm thinking, I'm feeling pretty good, because what you've heard has been really good news from your citizens. You started at a really good level in a lot of areas. Some areas, you started with difficulties, but you put a plan in place over the last eight years or so that really seems to be resonating mostly with the public. And at the same time, as Ron was saying a minute ago, there's other areas, and that's why people share with them. They don't, you know, you got to take the good with the not as good and things of this nature, and you have certainly done that in the past. So what about your satisfaction levels in the City of Blue Springs? They're generally higher than in the Kansas City metro and national averages. So what we do here is the blue, the top line is the City of Blue Springs. The green in the middle is the Kansas City metro area, and that includes cities on the Missouri side and cities on the Kansas side of the equation. And then the black line is our national database. So you could see overall quality of life in the city, overall quality of city services, and overall value received for city taxes and fees are all up significantly. We talked, we saw that before. All three of those areas are significantly up from 2006. And then when you compare those areas to the rest of the metro area, all of them are significantly up as regards to the metro area. And I have to tell you that a lot of the communities are up as far as overall value for their tax dollars. You know, so you're not alone in regards to it. It's just that your rate is continuing to be at the high end of what people are seeing, and that keeps you at that high end level. When you look at the overall perceptions that city residents have of the city in which they live, and this is one of the more interesting charts, because this chart really helps you with benchmarking. So just let me explain it again. Probably, most of you know, but the horizontal line is really the range of answers that we've gotten from people, from communities that we've worked with as far as the overall quality of life satisfaction. So the 29 percent, that's the worst city that we've ever measured as far as overall satisfaction, being at 29 percent in the metro area. The highest is at 96 percent. The medium range overall quality of life is about 74 percent, and you guys are at 79 percent. So what that tells you in a number of ways, a number of things, you're above average. It also tells you that you have a little ways to go to the benchmark. Is it realistic for you to get to 80 percent, 84 percent? Sure. Paying attention to other things that the citizens are saying are important. When you get to the overall image of the city, that's the one that you're right on the benchmark, just a drop ahead of that. The overall quality of city services, you can see, that's the one with the highest over the average point in the metro area. And then overall value received for your tax dollars, that's where you're the second highest. And those normally go together. If you feel good about the quality of your services, you generally feel good about the overall value that you receive. When you look at overall satisfaction with major categories of services, Blue Springs compared to the metro area, we look at 13 different service areas. You're above, you have a significant increase, significantly better in satisfaction in seven of the areas, and in six of the areas, you're at or you're a little bit above or right at equal level satisfaction levels. When you get to public safety, you've actually got one that you're up significantly, feeling of safety in your neighborhood, one that you're down as relates to the rest of the metro area. That's probably the one area looking at that you say that's the most significant difference. How quickly ambulance personnel respond. You are lower than the metro area, you are lower than the national average on that. When you look at maintenance services, even though that's an issue with you, you guys are up in snow removal on city streets, you're higher, significantly higher than the average community on maintenance of city streets, you're a little bit lower in regards to maintenance of traffic signals and maintenance of city sidewalks. About, arrows again, is a 5 percent up or down. And then you get into parks and recreation services, number of city parks. That's not the quality of the parks, but the number of city parks, you're higher. Walking and biking trails, you're higher as far as satisfaction, the outdoor athletic fields, other than Hidden Valley. And that's an unusual way, by the way, to ask that question, because at every place else, you're really looking at all the sports facilities. So you're kind of taking away one facility. But one of the things also that when you have good quality, when you have a good number of parks, it makes also the burden on you higher to keep those parks in good condition. So you're, basically, your citizens are saying they're satisfied with the quality, with the quantity of parks you have, but the condition of the parks, they're not as Then you get into overall satisfaction, code enforcement. Here, you're pretty equal with the rest of the metro area nationally. And so again, if you look in total, in total, I think there was only one area that you were significantly lower. There was about 15 areas that you were significantly higher, and the remainder, you were right at the average. So what are the priorities for improvement? And that's really the key thing when we get into, is really meshing satisfaction with priorities. And so here's a chart that looks at your 13 major services. And if you look all the way to the extreme left is the service itself. To the column to the right of that is the most important ranking. So, and then the ranking is right next to that. So as an example, we always start from the top. Maintenance of city streets, 58 percent of households said it was one of the three most important things. That ranks as the number-one most important service to emphasize over the next two years. The second-highest priority service to emphasize is the flow of traffic and congestion management. That's the second highest. As far as satisfaction levels, quality of police service, excuse me, importance, quality of police services and protection is the third. And then when you get into what parks and recreation, the quality of city parks and facilities is fifth out of 13. So it's a fairly important area for you. As you then move over towards, more towards the middle, you get into the satisfaction levels. And so when you look at, it's easy to understand why maintenance of city streets and sidewalks is the most important priority, because the ranking is first as far as importance, it's ranked 13th out of 13 as far as satisfaction level. So as an example, if it ranked 13th as far as satisfaction level, and it also ranked 13th as far as importance, it would be a completely different story than it is ranking number one in importance and 13 with satisfaction. Flow of traffic ranked 12th, excuse me, 11th as far as satisfaction, but second as far as most important. So those are by far your two as highest priorities. And you can see there's a significantly, significant gap in the importance ratings. Those are .33 and .28. Those are the only ones that are over .20, and they're significantly over .20. And then you have one that's called a high priority, and that's the effectiveness of city planning. And what that really says is you're really higher up in city planning, people are a lot more, feel good and feel satisfied about community planning, but it's still a big issue in your community. And then it gets down to the median priorities. Start off with effectiveness of city communications, public, maintenance of city buildings, quality of police services, quality of city parks. This is just another way of looking at the same thing. This matrix basically says a few things. If you divide up every single one of the 13 services into those four matrices, the one to the top right is what we call continued emphasis. And continued emphasis means that this is something that your citizens are satisfied with above the average, because the line going horizontal is a midway point as far as satisfaction. The line going vertically is a midway point in regards to importance. So when you're looking at the police, you can see as far as importance, it's to the right of the importance line, that midway point, so it's a very important area for the satisfaction. It's above that line. That means people are satisfied. So that's what's called continued emphasis, is people like what you're doing, they're satisfied with the police force, they rank it as the third most important thing to do. What they're really telling you is keep it up. When you go down to opportunities for improvement, you've got there effectiveness of community planning, flow of traffic congestion, maintenance of city streets, all of those are important, higher importance than the average, and all of those have lower satisfaction than the average, and that's why it's there. And if you look as an example, you've really had an increase in the flow of traffic and congestion management, but you see where it's kind of in the middle there as far as satisfaction level? It's almost to the top of importance, but it's at the middle of satisfaction. And the reason I'm telling you that, it's still going, it's going to be in that box for a few more years. It's not going to get out of that box. Don't expect it to get out of that box next year or the year after, but if it starts going down as far as satisfaction in that box, that's where the problem is. Now, so really, the key is, in a perfect world, 10 years from now, you don't want anything in opportunities for improvement, and you definitely don't want the quality of police services and protection to start dropping down, because dropping down is the satisfaction. And that's what you're really going to see. You're not going to see things move that much left to right, because things over the period of time stay, what's important generally stays important, unless there's really a calam, you know, a catastrophe or something of that nature. Where it's going to change the most is moving up and down in satisfaction. Then other major findings, just real quickly. If you look at how residents find out about city news, the website has significantly showed increases in the last eight years. The newspaper has significantly showed decreases. Which two methods of communication do you prefer? Blue Springs Magazine is very, very popular, and then the website. If the city offered a neighborhood-specific e-newsletter that featured hyper-local news and crime reports specific to the area where you live, would you be interested? 77 percent of residents are saying yes. And one of the things that we're finding is just like getting on your cell phone and things of this, just getting on your internet and things of this nature, people want to hear from you instantly. I mean, instantly anymore, and the same thing with citizens. So cities are moving towards that type of a connection so that they can have it. Would you support up to one-half cent park sales tax for a period of five years for the maintenance of parks and park amenities? 44 percent of residents say yes. 28 percent say no. Don't know is 28 percent. I could tell you that it's a real, you know, it's a real good number as far as yes, because you, if you get close to 50 percent right out of the chute, it's a really good number. And so when you're looking at 70, 44 percent saying yes, and then another 28 percent saying don't know, those aren't bad, but 28 percent is a little high for no. So when I'm looking at this, what I'm saying is that you, if you decide to go ahead, you have a real, you have a good chance of passing it, but it's not going to be a slam dunk. And I do a lot of bond elections for parks and recreation systems across the country. And it's, you don't necessarily want to look at don't know and figure you're going to get 60 or 70 percent of that. You know, a lot of times, you're going to get, you know, half of that.
...that the number-one priority is the parks, but they don't want to pay for it?
Actually, the number-one priority is not the park. It's about the number, it's about the number five or six.
But it was high.
It was high.
And yet...
Well, you've got 40...
They're saying no to supporting it.
Well, you've got 44 percent of people who are saying that, yes, they would. That's actually out of the box. You know, the benchmark you really want to be at out of the box is... You know, the benchmark you really wanna be at out of the box is 40% or more saying yes. So you're really at that benchmark, and 28% saying don't know. So really, at the top end, you're in pretty good shape. It's that you have a certain resistance at that 28%, that's what I'm saying. Generally, you wanna keep that about the 15 or 18% point. So what you have is the, you know, I'm simply saying that I think you would have a good chance of doing this for the right types of projects, which in maintenance of parks obviously is one, some of your sports facilities. I'm simply saying it's not gonna just be everyone, but you know, it's about the fifth highest priority. So I do think that the general public is willing to support it, but there is some opposition. Then, ratings of the city's current pace of development in various areas, and basically what you're seeing is most people think you're getting it just right, and if you, you know, so you could see just right in industrial development, office development, single-family residential, retail development, all of those, just right is really the highest by far. And then when you get into condominiums, multi-house, multifamily residential development designed to be rent occupied, that is your big area where you have some controversy in regards to people saying it's, it's moving much too fast. I mean, that's, you can see that that's such a difference from everything else, that it's obviously something that people think about. We didn't ask importance, we didn't ask how satisfaction relates to that, we just asked that question. Yes, sir?
What's the ratio of homeowners to renters to the survey?
You know, I don't have the full survey in front of me...
I would think it's biased for homeowners to renters.
Oh, I would think so, absolutely. And I see somebody's getting that right now, and I apologize, but they'll get it in a second. Why don't I, let me, let me move on, and then we'll get back to that question. How often do you use Blue Springs Park? This question actually generated the most, almost people, like 50/50 on a lot of the issues. So you could look, never is 48%, and then everybody else, and then not aware, we had one at 22%, and then the rest. When you ask, do you feel there's a need for recycling center? Again, you see a real split. No, I don't recycle, 11, 12, no, I use Pink Hill, no, I prefer recycling, no, my waste holder, that's right at about 48, 49, 50%. When you ask the question, which of the following statements best describes your opinion of the recycling schedule? You have a third of the people say that current hours meet their needs, you got 45% of people who say they don't use the facility. So you really have the vast majority of people who are saying that's, it's fine the way it is. But you do have, in making that statement, you do have 26, 27% of people, which is a lot of people, that's about the same amount that we were talking about that might vote no, and that are saying no, I would like some additional hours. So you really have a mixed bag on this, no question about it. So summary, you got the...
It's 84% own and about 16%.
So summary, just getting back to what of the satisfaction importance, as I said before, the residents have a very positive perception of your community, as you've seen. The analysis of trends, you're up significantly in a variety, a lot of areas, I don't wanna say in the majority, but it's significantly in many, many areas over the long haul, a little bit on the short term, there are some bumps. Satisfaction, your services ranked very, very highly and relates to the Kansas City metro area. And your overall priorities for improvements over the next two years are the same ones actually that they've been over the last two. Maintenance of city streets, buildings and facilities, the flow of traffic congestion management, maintenance, excuse me. So that's one. We have the developer ones, which is gonna be a little shorter, if you could help me with it? Thank you.
Well, while you're doing it, are there any questions from the council or comments on the first presentation before we get into the second? If not, I will make a comment, and I think that there are a couple of items where we did not rank as well on, that I think it might be a lack of knowledge from some of the people, because on the ambulance, we no longer control that. That's controlled by Central Jackson County Fire Protection District, although we used to have it as a contracted services, we have no say over that one. The other one is traffic, pardon?
Or also have a second one.
Right, and some of that, and those numbers could be coming from the second fire district, good point. Secondly, on the traffic flow and congestion, our two major highways, 40 Highway and Seven, are not controlled by the city, it's controlled by the state of Missouri, MoDOT. And when I get those concerns, I'm shooting an email to Chris, which you get with MoDOT, and let them know what the issues are. So we can maybe influence it, but we don't control it.
I think you might wanna look if the, if the ambulance has been a recent change, you may consider taking that out under the police services because that's, they'll just reinforce in a certain sense that perception of getting that out.
Okay. Eric?
Your honor, just a couple of things, and I know there's a lot of information for the city council to digest, and as you look and you go through this report, a couple of things I'd like to highlight. You're gonna see in our police department, we've had several public safety measurements have gone up. Overall efforts to prevent crime, visibility of police in neighborhood and retail areas, and of course, we know we've made some major strategic investments in public safety over the past few years, and I think this survey supports those investments, and you're seeing that. Another area under transportation relates to Woods Chapel and people's general satisfaction with Woods Chapel and congestion of traffic. You're gonna see that we've moved the bar on that, and it's a direct correlation to the strategic investment. I know we talked about it tonight, but the maintenance of streets and sidewalks continues to be one of those areas, and we know the council has taken steps over the past year to allocate funds for sidewalk maintenance. We're working on a plan to deploy that. It's gonna take some time for us to implement that plan and move that, but I'm confident that a few years from now, once we've begun to actually get into neighborhoods and make improvements to the sidewalks, we're gonna see that indicator go up as well. So just a couple of observations.
Cosmo Levysey?
Just on that note that you were talking about specifically Woods Chapel, because I looked at the full report that we were given the copy of, and looked at the maps that indicated the satisfaction, and the lowest levels of satisfaction with Woods Chapel congestion are people that live like on Adams Dairy Parkway. And so the people that live around Woods Chapel Road are still very satisfied with the traffic flow congestion. I think a lot of that, just like we're talking about with the ambulance or whatever, just comes from perception and not necessarily reality, some people actually use that area. So it would be in worse your investment of your time to look at those maps and see the proportion of the satisfaction comes from areas that aren't necessarily influenced by that particular thing.
I guess that what that means is that people in Adams Dairy are happy with their experience in our new, in our new road, and I'm glad we continue to make investment in that area.
Okay, well, we're gonna get ready and go to the next presentation, but one of the things that this, this presentation is very timely, because the city council within this next six weeks or so will be doing a council retreat, and it gives us a lot of things to think about and to talk about as we start visioning for the future. You know, the last time we had one was seven years ago, and a lot came out of that, and we almost have a checklist we could go down on some of the things that we talked about and some of the successes we've had or that we've instituted since that last retreat. And certainly, we're, we're past due in doing another one of those, and so we look forward to doing that and starting to determine what the priorities are and use this as a baseline to talk about those things. So back to you, Ron.
Well, that's perfect. Well, let's, let's go briefly through the community development survey. Quite a bit of a different survey, it didn't go out to residents, went out to your customers. It's a six-page survey, it was done over the phone, it was administered, the sample size was 60 customers. So when you really look at this, it's not as much a statistically valid tool as it is, you know, feedback. It's, it's not a ton of people, but it's good information, is what I'm saying. And when you look at fluctuations, you may be talking about three or four people can influence a lot percentages. So you have to take that into mind also. But having said that, I think it's terrific information in many senses. What's your primary business physically located? Only 19% of those who filled out the survey, who took the survey indicated Blue Springs, Missouri is a, is a primary place, and a third indicated their primary source, place of business was in another state. How many times since 2013 have you been involved in a business building, construction project? Really, when you look, the vast majority of the work, about two-thirds of it has been those, those people, those businesses who have been involved one to five times. When you look from a standpoint of since 2013, how, how many projects have you been involved with? Now there, you have more than 20 times, you have 50%. More than 20%, 50% of people have been involved with projects in communities, 20,000 persons or more. Not here in Blue Springs, but they've been involved with similar types of communities and things of this nature. So they're fairly knowledgeable about the business practices that communities of this, you know, this size, larger are, are doing. Which of the following best describes your role? We were able to talk to owners or owners' representatives, which is great, at 40%, and then the contractor, 31%. So most of the people we talked about were decision-making people. Please select all types of projects that you've worked on. Really overwhelmingly, there's two types of projects, non-residential renovations and new commercial industrial. Those are, those are really the biggies, and only 10% other, new home construction, 15, apartment construction, eight subdivisions, development, six. So most of the work in those two areas. What is the approximate average cost of the projects you've been involved with during the past two years in Blue Springs? The vast, you know, the vast highest percentage in these areas is less than $250,000, 42%. Then when you get into 250 to 499,000, it's an additional 17%. So basically, the majority of the projects are half million dollars or less that these develop, that these business people have been involved with. Ratings of Blue Springs development review process compared to other Missouri cities? So again, what you need to look at is, the black is that your process is much better than other cities that they're comparing with. And remember, about 20% actually are businesses here in Blue Springs. The blue is that your process is better. The white is your process is the same, and the red is your process is worse. It's somewhat worse or much worse, just like much better and better. So in every case, with the exception of one community, your process is ranked much better or better than other processes that are, that are ranked ahead of yours. And like, you could see at the top at the end, like City of Gladstone, where you've got over 50% of the business people are saying your process is much better or better, and only 10% are saying Gladstone is, that you're much worse or worse than Gladstone. And you can see that at the top end of Kansas City, as you start moving, City of Liberty is the, is the one community where you have about an equal amount who are saying that yours is much better, and they're saying that Liberty, that yours is worse or much worse than Liberty. But you got the highest, highest the same in that, in that particular area also. Have you or your company ever worked with city's planning staff? You've got some really very, very much similarities in what people are saying. First, you could see that the amount of people who said yes, the amount of businesses is literally the same from 2013 to 2014. Then when you ask the question, and this is about 16 or 17 different areas that they could be involved with, city's planning and development staff. And you can see by far, the biggest blue, the biggest black, excuse me, was that they strongly agree with the statement that the staff were courteous. 54% strongly agree with inspectors were available when needed and expected. So you can see the rankings in every one of these cases, except for a few, is, is they strongly agree with a positive ranking for the staff. And you can see the blue, which is disagree, is very, very, very low, with the, there's only like three, five areas, I guess, that it gets over 10%. So you can see a really good relationship here with people feeling good about this aspect of the process and the staff that they work with. When you get into the city's code administration, building permit staff, again, you can see more people are involved there than are involved with planning staff. So this is an area that the vast majority of businesses who responded to the survey have, have encounters with, and you can see again that the ratings are really good. As far as, and I particularly looked at the treatment received was unbiased. I think that's a pretty important thing when you're dealing with a governmental agency, that people feel coming out of it, that the treatment they received was unbiased. And then looking from a standpoint, staff had adequate authority and training, staff were courteous, information forms readily available, those are all really, really high ranking things. So again, there's nothing here, the highest as far as disagree somewhat is the permit was issued in a timely manner. And when you're in business, you, I don't know about your customers, but my customers, they're like things, just sort of like the people who, you know, as I, as I was walking in here, I got an email from somebody about five minutes before I walked in here, and I said I could either get into this meeting five minutes early, or I could return that email within five minutes of getting it, or else within an hour and five minutes of getting it, so I returned the email, because that was what the expectation was. Have you or your company ever worked with the city's public works utilities and engineering staff? Now, this had the lowest amount of people saying yes that they had, only about a third. But again, the ratings were really high, staff was courteous, the highest, 76%. Inspection forms were available when needed, inspector, excuse me, 59%. The lowest in a sense of the red, the very lowest of the red of any of them, and quite a bit of neutral. Satisfaction with various groups involved with the development review process? Every single group, whether it's Board of Zoning Adjustment, Planning Commission, Appearance Review Committee, City Council, everyone had 50% or more of people saying that they were very satisfied, and then getting into satisfied, and the satisfaction levels were really pretty low. It's interesting, you see very, the satisfaction level with the city council is 4%, and as far as the satisfaction, very satisfied is 50%, and satisfied is 21%. Those are pretty darn good ratings. Overall satisfaction with length of time it takes to get a project approved in Blue Springs as compared to similar communities? Very satisfied, 17%, satisfied, 37%. So you're over 50% are saying they're very satisfied and satisfied as compared to other communities, and looking on the other end of it, very dissatisfied and dissatisfied are at 13%. So you've got a margin of about three to four to one as far as very satisfied, satisfied to very dissatisfied, dissatisfied, and most of people knew, obviously, because they were taking the survey. Just a few other things. Satisfaction with the building development standards and processes in Blue Springs? Again, you see very little red as far as dissatisfied. The building codes had the highest ratings as far as very satisfied with building permits, sign-off sheets, having the second highest ratings, but you did well in all of those, and you didn't do poorly in any of them, really. Has your experience with the city during your construction building project impacted your planning to, your plans to do future projects? Well, in 2013, 30% of businesses said they were more likely to do business in Blue Springs, and here, more likely to do business in Blue Springs, 33%. No impact, a year ago, it was 52%, no impact, 50%, and then less likely to do business in Blue Springs, 11%. A year ago, 8% this time. So about a four to one margin as far as more likely to likely, but, but half the people, they feel the same as they did before. Have you ever used Blue Springs website specifically, planning? 47%, yes this time, 56% last, last time. And then online submittals, you could see there are some real, you know, variances from 2013 to 2014 as far as how submittals were done. Online payment, done more often now than it was done before. Online application submittal, done a little bit less this year than it was done the last time. Online plan submittal, done a little bit, just the opposite, done more this time than it was done last time. Overall satisfaction with the contents of the city's website? Very satisfied is almost double where it was last time, and satisfied is a little lower. And I always look at it from a standpoint that if you take very satisfied and satisfied, put those together, and you come up with 42%, that's really not that much different than 2013, which was at 40%. But when you look at how that 42 and 40% was put together, and you've been, and you've doubled the very satisfied, to me, that's sometimes a benchmark that you wanna be moving people from satisfied to very satisfied, things of that's nature. And then satisfaction with city efforts to make the... And then satisfaction with city efforts to make development review process information available through the website, brochures and meetings. Here, it's significantly higher. It's 7% very satisfied before, very satisfied now, 23%. That's probably the biggest bump that we've seen in anything, and your satisfaction level actually has gone up too. So when you look at satisfied and very satisfied, in 2013 it was 37%, about a third, and now you're over 50%. Level of agreement with various statements related to the development of the review process? And then the city cares about its customers, that's the number one thing that people indicate. 50% say they strongly agree with that statement, 30% say they agree with that statement, the lowest amount of neutrals, the lowest amount, other than the city has improved customer service, the lowest amount of disagree. And I think it's interesting when it says the city does its best to fix the mistakes. 39% strongly agree, 17% agree. I usually say that I make more mistakes in a day than my wife makes in about a month, or at least that she admits to making in a month. But I'm very good at saying I'm sorry. And again, that's the presentation, comments, and that nature.
Any questions, comments from the council? Thank you again for those reports. I think we continue to respond to the residents' needs and concerns. We've done well, but we're not gonna rest on that, there's still much to do, and we'll continue to be focused on how we can improve and make it even better. So, that being said, thank you for the presentation this evening.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to work with you.
That brings us to mayoral announcements. I didn't realize that on March 2nd, when we had our first council meeting, but the month of March is Women's History Month. Did y'all know that? And so we're going to do a quote from a woman tonight, although we're gonna mingle those throughout the course of the year, but we wanna recognize a lady that, a quote from a lady that I had the opportunity to meet on March 4th in Kansas City. There's a picture of us right there. Never had an opportunity to meet her, Condoleezza Rice, former Secretary of State. And one of her quotes is, "The essence of America, that which really unites us, is not ethnicity or nationality or religion. It is an idea, and what an idea it is, that you can come from humble circumstances and do great things, that it doesn't matter where you came from, but where you're going," end quote. So anyway, great quote from her and great opportunity to actually meet her. Don't have any visitors appearance forms, so that will bring us to, and there is no executive session. Oh, there is one?
If you don't mind.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. We will defer to our city attorney.
I think an appropriate motion at this time would be to move this body going to closed session pursuant to Section 610 and 2021, subsection two, relating to real estate transactions where the public knowledge of same may affect the legal consideration of their, of this body, stand adjourned at the end of such session.
So moved.
Second, okay, roll call, please.
Captain Fowler.
Aye.
Counselor Carter.
Aye.
Counselor Edmondson.
Aye.
Counselor Culpepper.
Aye.
Counselor Leveson.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Attorney General Anderson.
We're gonna take about a two or three minute break to allow our visitors to be excused, and then we will convene with the executive session.